All right, we're out of executive session. We'll start with you, Casey, about the, quickly, the graduation policy.
Yeah, so you'll see first reading, no changes. It's just making it more concise. And what we're trying to do is prevent, however, if they do make a change, they have to go back and make constant changes to our work policy. So we took our original work policy and it's more concise. That's it. No changes.
Okay, that was quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys have any questions about it? I think I wrote a couple of emails basically saying.
You did. I just wanted to know. By your forecast, do you want to hand those out now or do you want to wait until they actually?
I can hand them out now. Yeah, I mean, I did email it already. So we have the notes that you can see on page. Page two or three is the actual forecast. And then I go into explanation and then that, that forecast is the basis of the rest. So yeah. So let me just, I do have a presentation for it, but I'm not going to bore you or so you guys see it twice. So the biggest updates for the forecast and it is a little uncomfortable for me doing the first forecast. It's also based on, based in levies as well. Yeah, but that's just coming to the job. So one is that we have the triennial update and thirty percent increase. So our, the value went up thirty percent. Does that mean everybody else is paying thirty percent more in taxes? The answer is no, because the effective rate does decrease based on household nine twenty. But our community does pay more in inside mileage, which is the largest part is four point nine seven percent for the district. So that's one. Number two, we have, that was against the forecast, which is the ESAR dollars are all spent. Most, I don't like to say compared to other districts, but most districts are still spending those dollars until nine thirty of next year. We spent it at six thirty of twenty twenty-three, kind of like a clean break, which is, so all those, especially personnel expenses, we didn't hire that, more people. You would see some districts have some really hard decisions made because they hired additional people. We supplanted salaries and then did programs and bought curriculum stuff for, within those dollars. So ESAR, if you hear ESAR, on the other districts, we are done as of six thirty. That was a negative because those costs came in. The positive is the staff reductions and those high level awesome staff members that retired. We did pay a severance of about four hundred thousand for all of them. But that, continuing, that's built in the forecast, that will continue to benefit the district. So you can say that it's almost like a give and take with the ESAR and, and the staff reduction. But staff reduction was, was far more, if that makes sense. Those three. And then I have, different than the past, and I'll mention this in an open session too. Different than the past, and I guess, I really thought about this, I asked, is for benefits. When I started talking about benefits. Obviously, health, anywhere you go, health insurance benefits are going to increase. The question is just how much? Since I, in the past, my predecessor, and this is just, I guess, a difference looking at data, talking, and I understand what Mr. Brown did, and so we're tied at four. So they always included, they included a premium, they, I'm sorry. They did not include a premium holiday in their forecasts. So to me, I look at that, is that I'm already forecasting healthcare expenses going up probably from nine or a little bit plus percent going forward. And that was through talking to other districts within the consortium. I didn't want to also include a, account for a, not, I, I wanted to account for a premium holiday. So there's a big change. It's like seven hundred, eight hundred thousand. And why did I say that? Why did I make that change? Is that we have twenty-eight years of experience within the COG of, or the COG has always given at least one premium holiday for twenty-something years. So I was like, okay, so I, I factor that, that in, so we, so we around seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars that I took out. It's an spending that I did not forecast for. Now, watch next, next, in ten months when they say that there's, there's, there's no premium holiday. But at least I'll have May to be able to update that. So there's still one more forecast in May. Now, we'll know that around April, May, at least there'll be rumblings. So those, those are the, 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 the big, the big ones for, within the forecast. I, in the notes, I have a large portion of, it's called the foundations, the state foundation supplement. So it's page five to like page twelve. This explains the Fair School Funding Plan. And to me, it's, it points out in particular about the guaranteed analysis. So if you even would go to, I think, page twelve or thirteen. Yeah, page ten. All of that is, all of those, that information is great to, for our district and the state. But it's really getting to, there's the guarantee, it's called base costs. And then you have all the other categories, categoricals, where it comes to special ed, transportation, gifted funding. So overall, you have our students are like thirty-two hundred. You divide that by the total, it's about fourteen hundred per student. If you go to base cost, which was updated in phase two of the Fair School Funding Plan, and you'll know where I'm getting, where I'm coming from, is that we are on the guarantee. So we're guaranteed a certain amount from like twenty, I think it's twenty twenty numbers or twenty nineteen numbers. So what does that mean? Because the state considers us high capacity, so our values are increasing from our, our triennial update. Our incomes in the area are also increasing historically. And then we are either plateaued or decreasing enrollment. So that means, in the eyes of the state, our capacity is very high. So we're, we are getting for base costs, we're getting eight hundred and twelve dollars a student. And I'm like, okay. And then this is the last part, I'll mention the state foundation. How much more, how many more students will we, would we need to receive one extra dollar in base cost funding? So how many students will we need to receive one more dollar? And for this year, it's a hundred, around a hundred and seventy students. So what does that say? We're, we're pretty deep on the guarantee. So if there's any talk in Columbus or the General Assembly about changing guarantees, that's, that's going to affect us. Now, because we are a higher capacity district, I mean, money is money, of course, to help, to help the general fund. Like, that's why I, I kind of put it out there, like, we're pretty deep in the guarantee ever since. Any questions thus far?
I have some on the holiday. You said you built that into the budget, right? Whereas Mr. Brown was not included in the budget, right?
He was, he was including twelve months of healthcare expenses. I'm including basically eleven.
Karen always did the same. Karen always included twelve.
Karen did the same. I don't want to be, want to be caught in the part where, like, there's, the forecasts are fair, considered conservative going forward. Because you're going on, you're going on five years. I didn't want to be too, I wanted to be some, I didn't, I wanted to be in the ballpark. And looking at twenty-eight years of data, I'm like, it just, it just points and talking to other districts to account for that. So, yeah. And, and if it comes, if it comes back and if that's a surprise come this, early twenty twenty-four, I'll communicate with the board and it'll be updated in the May forecast.
You mean if they decided not to give us premium holidays for five years?
Yes.
Okay. So then in essence, like, we're looking at the fiscal year twenty-four and there's like a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit.
That's for this year, yes.
Okay, now is that, if you didn't build in the healthcare premium, is that one point four?
Yeah. No, because, well, we would have already, that's correct. We've already, we would have spent that in July. So it's already included, like, the, the, we already had a premium holiday in July.
Right, for this district.
For this district. So I'm assuming basically next, next July.
So wouldn't be one point four, right?
No.
We already had it.
Yeah, we already had it, so next year, I guess.
Right, but twenty twenty-five, wouldn't be a three million dollars, it'd be three million plus an additional seven fifty.
It's like three point seven.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
So you could tell how confusing or frustrating, like, one, one aspect of the forecast can throw it off of. I looked at a payroll as one point four million dollars to have a payroll.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so you said our base amount for funding, it comes down to about eight hundred and twelve dollars a day.
Yeah.
So, but we're at fourteen. So what are the other components that come in to this to the fourteen hundred?
It's a transfer, there's a, transportation, gifted, there's, special ed, economically disadvantaged. I think, but those are the, the bigger ones as well. So I can go to the statement, I'm sorry. Yeah, it, it is a, there's, there's wellness dollars, there's targeted assistance, it's zero, I'm sorry. Special ed, EPIA, which is the old economic disadvantage. English learners, gifted funding, which is a hundred and thirteen thousand a year. Career tech, it's fifty-eight hundred a year. The guarantee, transportation is one million dollars a year. Preschool, special ed is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand and special ed transportation is two hundred and seventy-four thousand. So to get that, it's a total of four point seven million. That's base cost, all the categories is four point seven million. You roughly divide that by our students and it's roughly fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred. And it is, as you said, just based on that capacity question. So that's the state's really formula for us to raise local dollars. My previous district has eighteen hundred kids and they receive five, five point four million dollars. We have thirty-two hundred, four point seven. It just shows, I mean, it, the Fair School Funding Plan is, is a very good thing for Ohio.
Overall.
Overall.
Overall, it's much better than what, I mean, the, the old system is completely different.
Yeah.
Most districts were on a guarantee.
Yeah.
And now you're down to a handful of districts on a guarantee. So the funding formula works for the state overall. It's just more donation really, definitely.
And any, any new money is any new money. And we will get some additional, we just got some additional for this phase two of Fair School Funding Plan. We'll get some, a little bit next year and then if they do phase three for the next biennial. But it won't, it's, it won't be as substantial as other districts.
No.
So, if you look at fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, you are now basically breakeven at the end, ending fund balance of three hundred thousand dollars. Regardless of, you know, obviously the financial forecast has moved in the right direction significantly. We went from negative seven million to, to three hundred thousand dollar positive. But some of that was a bigger than anticipated valuation from the state. You know, increased our funding there a little bit on our properties. But it's also our cost cutting and our savings were really kicked in. But regardless, we're pretty much out of money at the end of twenty twenty-seven. So, which is, leads into our next discussion of what we want to do as far as latencies and asking for new money and projections and.
Do you want to mention one more? Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot this one. And I will mention this because it is, it is important. So I look at, a lot of the forecast is, it's, it's analysis and it's trends. And then you look at what's different in, in your district. One of the biggest things is the settlement that we have. So in, built into the forecast, we have, for the settlement, we'll get two point four million dollars this year in around March for fiscal twenty-four, two point four million dollars in fiscal twenty-five. And fiscal twenty-six, I think it's four hundred, it's four hundred and sixty-five thousand, roughly happens. Yeah, so for this year, just like last, last year, Casey and I and Mr. Marlowe were part of a bid opening. From that two point four million, the question is, okay, well, how much are we going to transfer out to our, to our PI dollars? And I have forecasted one point five million dollars for this year. So yes, in revenue, the two point four is there. But then if you go to the transfers, it's one point five for this year as well as next year. And then twenty-six, we receive four hundred and sixty-five thousand. I have it built in where we're transferring out four hundred and sixty-five thousand. So currently, we're, we're, capital outlay, you see in the forecast, capital outlay is very small in the general fund. Why? Is that we're trying to push it to the PI dollars in, in front of O three. If we're at twenty-six, we will have to, and there's any, if there are any bigger projects or projects of necessity, it's, it's got to come from the general fund. And I have not labeled that because that's, that's, I just don't know. I, I can go off the past, but we don't know what projects are coming up. We, we did a bid opening last week, was, the total was one point five million. But we, we legitimately knew that we had concrete and asphalt every year. So we neglected, I'm sorry, I'm speaking up, I'm, I'm first steed, and, but we neglected not to do a project of two hundred and seventy-five thousand just because we knew that there's concrete and asphalt, standard maintenance that we typically do too. Is that, is that correct?
So.
And then the, it's just a different than, than every, every, different than for this year because of the, the presidential election next November. Typically, we would have until, the election would be in May. And so now, if, if the board decides to go to a levy, it would have to be resolution number one today. And then some point before December twentieth, resolution number two. And that's kind of, it's like a, it's a weird part because it's got to be ninety days before the, the March election. So that's where this comes.
Are you talking March? I thought you meant November.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Presidential, I'm assuming primary.
Primary, primary.
Primary is in March, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're normally in May.
Yeah.
But because of the presidential year, we're doing it in March. So we have ninety days, so we have till December twentieth to, to go forward if we choose to be on the ballot in March.
And can I give, pass up the rest? So using the base forecast. Sorry, it's a lot of paper today. Using the base forecast, you, I then will plug in, like, what does a levy, a three, four and five? I kind of went, when I did the treasury goals, I said I would give the board, what does a three, four and five look like? And this is for general fund only. And so these models are here. So the colored one, those are the models. I'm just going to put down the log bit. So the models would be, it kind of gives cash on hand. I have the, the levy history. What a, what one mil would bring in. So for, for calendar, for tax year twenty twenty-four, if in March or November, it would be one mil is roughly almost one point five million, one point four seven two. And then I modeled to the last three pages, sorry. What would a three, a four and a five look like for general operating?
So these are just, you gave us just general operating.
Yes.
Would a PI levy, if we did a conjunct, conjuring operating PI, that would obviously increase our cash too because it's going to absorb some of the fair school maintenance costs that we expect there.
Yes, but there are those, going forward, I don't have those capital outlay. That's really not in the forecast right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so theoretically, but it's really accounted for those zero expenses for capital outlay or small one percent is, is accounted as a one percent going forward. Because, sorry, we've been diverted for.
We're already diverting out of the PI.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
So to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, if we were to include a PI along with the operating, that would really, really just be to try to supplant spending the other money that will then be applied to the general and continue to do band aid work, correct?
If we do an operating and a PI, we're essentially using the PI money to replace what's going to go away from the MGM.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. But, but again, we're, we're only trying to secure a fund of money to do band aids.
Yes.
Yeah, to do repairs.
Yeah, to do repairs.
Those are, those are band aids.
Yes.
We, we already know that the, our facilities are in dire need, so.
Just curious, because I know this kind of goes back a little bit, but had we passed the bond last year, would we, I'm assuming we would still be in the same financial condition as far as having the potential to pass a levy?
I, I don't want to speak at a turn, I don't know that exactly. But you can say that you probably spend a little bit, if you reduce buildings a little bit, just probably in staffing.
We just weren't anticipating reducing buildings within a year.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
So we'd still.
Over time, yeah.
Sure.
I would say we might be a little better, but not significantly. Because instead of doing a full roof tear off, we might have just band aided it for a couple of years until the building was coming down. But we wouldn't have seen, we wouldn't have seen reduction in building savings until twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
And you probably would not have trance, we would, wouldn't probably have transferred one point five million. We would be like, hey, what can we do for a couple of years and not replacing the whole thing? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So there probably is save, a little bit of saves with that.
Okay. I just remember being a concern last year, the bond and the levy.
The long term, go, can't, can't, was that we would have saved significant amount of money right there.
The, the real help would have come five years.
And we would have been locked in at last year's interest rates, which would have been.
Much better than they are now.
Fantastic.
So, and then, just so, right, so, union contracts or any, like, bigger contracts, I account for what is known. So those are, and then I give a, 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 not like maybe a ballpark of what it could be, but it's not, I, the biggest ones that, like, what am I trying, what am I trying to say? Going forward, is that the contracts I know are built into the forecast. And the contracts going forward after twenty-sixth and beyond are not known yet. And I don't like to guess.
That's my, that's, I guess, one of my next questions. Because, like, if I'm looking at the forecast, if our expenditures are outpacing the revenues but we're not technically hitting emergency situation till twenty-eight, why, why are we rushing into potentially putting levy on in March? Why would we be?
I'm given to the information for you guys today, the board, I don't mean to punt that, but.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not saying it's you.
I also look at the, the levy history. Like, what, what, what has gone before, like, I mean, that's, that's a real thing, like, just the trends from the last.
I'm just curious, only because, like, I mean, even this last year, we saved, what was it, over, well over a million dollars just on attrition and not, you know, rehiring, seven, I think it was seven full-time employees.
Right, but if you suddenly wait until twenty twenty-six, let's say, to try and pass a levy, try to pass it until twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
And if it suddenly takes an extra time to pass, you suddenly become two thousand and eleven where you're just doing massive cuts.
No, I, I agree, yeah.
So we're trying to get ahead of it because if you don't pass it, I mean, if you pass it now, that's six million dollars now.
Sure.
Four million, no, whatever that number is.
That's a good, it's three million by twenty-five.
Mr. Green, that's a good point. And just know, in my position, and it's how I've always tried to operate through great mentors, is that whether it's, I have, we have a hundred million dollars in the bank or ten million dollars in the bank, still going to, we're still going to look at, we're still going to look at cost, programs, enrollment. But that's very, it's a very real conversation, what, what's needed in the classroom. It's not just cutting, it's also what, what the kids, what is in need for what's going on within the building. So it's, just know that, like, it's.
Sure, sure. No, that makes sense. And I, I'm not saying wait till last, and I'm, I'm only for my own curiosity as to, I mean, we're almost four years out. I just didn't know if there was, you know, your recommendation to, like, we need it potentially in the spring, I guess, but.
And our, when our record is failed, 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 passed, failed, failed, passed, failed, 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 passed. You know, when we have that in a record.
Need some time to prepare just in case it doesn't go.
But I think we should focus on why is it that record? And I think that goes back to a discussion we, we should have about where can we cut and save to show the community that we're being responsible in order to get something like that passed? And that, that's why I'm asking, because it's not, you know, I, I think it's going to be the question of a lot of individuals in the community.
And I agree with you, and I think in good faith, because of the work we've been doing now, it is showing exactly that. We've already started that prior to even seeing it as a necessity, but just knowing that we could do better in some areas. And so since we were, we were doing that, I think that kind of sets the conversation for, hey, so we are maybe almost at that meanness space that we can be. But even projecting out, or like, four years from now, we're going to need to have some money to operate and continue this great services that we're providing for kids.
And, and the way that I thought it, I brought up too, is that I, obviously I wasn't here, but I watched the, the state, the state of schools last year and it just seemed like there could be an appetite for the community or the board, correct me if I'm wrong, for some, another type of project in, in the future. And I think if, if there would be a higher operating levy or sooner something would pass, then there is, there is a window.
And that's, you jumped ahead of me on that, and that was kind of what I was going to say. If you wait, then you might need a bigger levy, which means no building. So maybe the hundred and sixty-five million was too big, obviously the community voted it down significantly. So maybe the, the three building project was, is, is dead again.
Sure.
But if we can pass an operating levy, even if it's a smaller dollar or not, we get ahead of things. It gives us that window to maybe do one building at a time, show the community, hey, look, we're cutting costs. We just let seven teachers, you know, teaching positions not get replaced. Now let's start working forward. When can we get a, whatever, a sixty million dollar bond to try and build one K through five elementary or something like that? So I think it just reduced the number of buildings for operators. So I think, I think they just need to get ahead of it is the hard thing. It's just more, but it's one millage.
Yeah, and I think the concern is that the community, within a year ago, since sixty forty, no on additional. And maybe they didn't agree necessarily with the plan that we proposed. But my concern is I don't want to be here at the end of March saying, well, we just paid to certify this, didn't pass overwhelmingly. So how do we continue conveying that message? Because I think that's what we have to get out, is showing all the work that we are doing, trying to trim costs and be responsible. You know what I mean?
Right.
And I don't know from now till March, I mean, you're talking two months, two and a half, or three months, you know, how do we, how do we convey that in that short window?
I'd like to look more into finding out if just the one hundred and sixty-five was just too big of an ask. Because I think, from what I can tell here, when it was needed and I believe articulated in twenty nineteen, because that was the first levy I voted on in the community, it was very clear that this was to make sure that our band programs, our extra curriculums, we had technology and all of that we see. We go around to our classrooms, we see this stuff actively working, so dollars well spent. So I think, I, I think where we, we have to probably take some more time to look and see because whether or not it was just the ask was too big. And, and I'm, you know, I would want to make a more bona fide hypothesis on the matter. So we need some more information, but I'm almost sure that it was probably because we've asked a little bit too much. I mean, with good intention to just try and get it all done, hoping that if we didn't get it passed in that one fail swoop, then we'd never get any buildings. But I think had we, we walked it back a little bit, I could even say, I believe we might even have been able to get a building passed. And then two years from that, even if we had to say just for operating purposes, that people understand clearly that infrastructure and buildings is much different than our day-to-day money to run the district. I, I, I could see that we probably could have gotten a couple of passes. I mean, we, we have proof in the pudding, again, with our cuts, as well as being able to show we have done well with the. Again, with our cuts, as well as being able to show what we have done well with the last.
And I think that's the way you get away from the trend of, we're just going to run this four times and cuts and.
Yeah.
And threats and that. I mean, it just, to me, I feel like that's what hurts the, the relationships as far as.
I don't want us to get to a point where there's, we're saying this, these cuts are going to be made. We need to have, we need to have something in place before, that's the conversation. So, I mean, I've been on the recent, you know, that before, and it's okay.
So, I hate to add, it's something that I might call on to add, but, you know, I will anyway. We're, we're going to be in a situation where cutting, there's zero doubt. Like, we're going to be in a situation within this year, we're reducing budgets. Again, we reduced by 5% last year. We'll probably at least do that, if not more this year. Our disposition will be looked at. Now, the more, we, we reduced staff by seven last year. It's going to be harder and harder to reduce more staff, because class sizes at elementary level is probably looking at 22, 23, up to 25. So once you start reducing more than that, you're looking at class sizes high twenties, even hit thirties. I don't think that's going to be acceptable by anybody. Once you start running, uh, high school, I know that very well, you'll just reduce, reduce opportunities. So, I mean, I've already talked to Mr. Angle and said, all right, what classes are, what is the number of kids we need for a class before we're not running? What does that look like? I mean, some of your AP courses or courses that might run a little smaller, won't run, because we're going to have to reduce staff. Middle school, I thought that Brian had a little bit about this. I mean, the only way to reduce personnel within middle school is get away from a middle school concept. Because right now, when you got team concept, the team requires the number of teachers for the team, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, with the intervention specialists tied to it. The only way then to reduce class size, or reduce number of staff there, is to do, move it to a generic concept. I guess the point I'm making is this, we're going to be reducing no matter what, we're going to be cutting no matter what happens. If we decide not to put up in March, I understand that, but understand, I think we also vote to our community to say, which direction do you want to go? Do you want to continue on the path where we're reducing opportunities, increasing class size, and changing the mindset of what middle school is, and reducing across the board in all, I mean, we were at 5%, we're probably closer to 8%, 10% across the board.
And you look at the rate of, they add, the concept that it's in now works, so.
So the follow-up to what Casey's saying though is, if we have any, even remote inclination of doing anything in March, we have to make a decision tonight and, and vote on it at the full meeting, but it doesn't commit us to anything. It's just that first resolution. So we have to come up with, right now, in the next 20 minutes, a resolution to say, do we want to do four mils, five mils, three mils? With the understanding that we could pull it and not run it in March, but we can't adjust it, right? So if we choose to do, let's just say we, right now, decided we're going to put four mil, no PI, and that's what we vote on in the, in, in tonight's meeting, then we're either committed to that number or nothing else. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
Yes, unless you do another couple of specials.
Okay, unless we have a special meeting somewhere in between. Yeah, we could have a special meeting to adjust it.
Yeah. The, the two, you have to certify, and it's not until the second certification until that's when the costs come to it. So again, you can pass resolution number one, think about it more, and let it die on the vine if that's the case.
What does the five mil, I mean, four mil, uh, generate?
Five point six in here.
Five point six mil operating.
You said a four mil. Four mil would be about $5.6 million.
Forty mil is about 1.5 million.
Yep.
I was just rounding down.
Which four, on average, for every 100,000, would be what?
Thirty-five dollars?
Yep.
Thirty-five dollars. So if you did a, if we did, let's just say, a five mil operating levy, that'd be a hundred seventy-five dollar tax increase per 100,000. So $300,000 home would be a $525 increase.
Of the assessed value.
Of the assessed value.
Over, I mean, in a year, right? So monthly, we look at, I mean, because that's the nuts and bolts, like we got to be able to say, this, this is how much it will look like in your mortgage payment.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I personally.
Or tax.
I don't know if I can even make a decision in 20 minutes as to how I would want to proceed as far as asking the community to support or not support a levy. That's just my own opinion. I mean, I would want to review the data that was given to us in, in greater detail. And again, I go back to, I don't, I don't want it to appear as if it's a decision that we made quickly to try to get passed in three months, because I, how much is it going to cost to certify on the 11th of March?
I do not know that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
I'm just curious, because if it's.
I, I don't agree that we're making a decision quickly, because quite honestly, I spent hours over the weekend.
Yeah, I was going to say this was, you know.
I spent hours going through everything. I mean, I have notes and calculations and everything. I put a lot of effort into this. And I, personally, I want to vote on something tonight to at least start the process. If we have to have a special meeting to adjust it, or if we have to let it die on the vine in December, so be it.
When is the?
But I at least want our options open for March.
The deadline is December 20th, but I would, between resolution one and resolution two, you probably need a solid five business days just for the county to process it, so.
So what's the absolute dead last date that this could be? Needs to be voted upon.
Two resolutions on the 20th, so.
Nine days.
Casey, you're talking about cuts and whatnot. We, I mean, if you come up with like, here's a list of things that we're going to plan on changing next year, or anything that we can say to the community, hey, this is what we're, I mean, this is what I'm talking about as far as quick decision-making. Because, I mean, yeah, I've reviewed this stuff, but I, my main concern is, again, showing the community that.
Yeah. So the answer is not quite set up yet. Here's why. Most retirements won't come in until the end of January, end of February, which is why. The ones that we've seen so far, we've already started to have some dialogue. It's just hard, because I, yes, I can show you what class sizes in elementary really look like. What I do think will happen is I think you'll see across the board budget cuts for every building, every department. And we were at 5% last year. I don't see it going past the 5%. So what does that look like? That looks like reduced curriculum, reduced technology.
What kind of administrative, do they cut their budgets to? I mean, as far as, the buildings are getting told to cut budgets, but do, are we telling administrations to?
You mean like curriculum, business, yeah.
Except for, like, with special, special ed.
Sure.
Legalities to that.
I'll give you an example, because it's painful, because I ran business, is our energy was up, right? All of our costs were up, which means when we took a 5% pay haircut on it, we actually had to cut deeper, because as we're taking the haircut on the budget, we also were showing increased amount of utility costs. What does that look like? I mean, it's really difficult when you start band-aiding things together without. When I was coming before, I'll give you an example, that is, it was shocking to me when I walked into the department. Equipment, in my budget, that is in the business department, I had a $5,000 equipment line per building. It means if they went over $5,000, I couldn't afford to put any additional equipment or equipment in that building. I was like, $5,000?
Yeah.
And, and I did not mention our increase in SROs, which is, we all agree was needed. But that we're trying to not go back, we're trying to keep that in to the current budget. That's what we're really trying now.
Yeah, right. Yeah, in addition to the haircut on the budget, also increased funding SRO places. Now, I saw that one coming, right? So I moved some money around to make sure that that would be over.
I want to be able to make a decision that we can go put something on. If you have a vote, no, you don't know, I understand. But I, I want something on tonight's to vote on, to at least get this process started. And I will tell you that, so in, you know, we have a seven mil operating levy, we have a 6.5 mil operating levy, a six mil operating levy, a seven mil operating levy. When we've done it, we've had pretty big gaps. We've gone seven years, eight years, one time for 11 years. And then we asked for a very large number, which gets very difficult then for the community, obviously. They see seven mils. Holy crap, that's a big number. I personally would like to go and be able to vote on like a four mil operating and a one mil PI. And let's start the process with that. Hey, let's go sooner, let's go with a smaller number. Let's show the community, hey, we're trying to cut costs, we're going to keep cutting the costs. We're only going to go with a four mil operating levy right now, and hope that we can extend that, we can cut costs. We're going to do everything we can, and if somehow we manage to fill, fit in a building project, so be it. But that's my opinion, because I'd like to go four mil. And I don't want to have to wait another two years and go for another seven mil levy. Seven mil levies are just a huge, huge bunch to swallow at one time.
So, help me understand this page, oh gosh, the levy scenario comparison?
Which page?
Uh, it's not numbered, but.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It just says, it's in the goldish color lettering or header, it says levy scenario.
Yeah, it could get.
So when I'm looking at the three mil operating, it says there that ultimately we would still be negative nine million in 2030, but with the.
Negative 0.6.
Three, no, that's a four mil.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, the three, you're right. That's correct. Sorry about that, yes.
So then that four mil puts us closer to being a closer, a better situation than fund balance by the end of that. What, it was at seven years from, six years from.
Yep.
So with the PI.
And I'm going pretty far. I mean, 2030 is pretty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I think realistically, I agree with you, Chad, as, as far as the ask. But I do want to make sure that everybody on the, the board feels comfortable. And so I guess my, my question back to you again, Kyle, when is the app, so you say it takes five business days?
Yeah, it would probably be the second week, the first week of December at the end, then you certify it, and I can say, hey, we, we got to get number two rolling, so can you certify faster, county? And then they would, yes, they would then certify.
Do they do that? They?
There had, there have been emergency situations too, but, yeah, they would, I would go there and ask them, yes.
Which, which elections can have more issues on the ballot? Probably the presidential, right?
Yep.
It's going to be cheaper to certify it, right?
Yes. Yes. But there's still pride, there's still, there's still.
No, I, I understand. I mean, I'm, I'm going back to when we were running the bond and how.
Yeah.
Right, but there's only two opportunities here anymore since August is now. So it's either March or November.
And I do understand, I, I understand the, the speed of this. I guess I tried to blow it a little bit from talking about treasure goals in September, mentioning this, I'd had the draft last month, so, um, yeah, I, I, it's just because of March. Like, if it was in May, we, we have more breathing, like if that.
So is the process, let's just say we voted tonight to start the process, we, whatever, it's four mil, five mil, whatever. Then you present it to the county to be certified. And then after that, if we wanted to change it, we'd have to put it in for recert. Or?
Yeah, I don't know that process. I mean, I'm assuming it's the same, but you'd have to vote on.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd have to, we'd have to have a special meeting to have a adjusted, recertified, and all of that. But if we, but if we vote on something today, and it gets certified, then we can move forward with that in December, or we can let it go at that point.
Correct.
When you say let it go, just change our mind altogether, just say we're not presenting it again to the ballot?
We're not going on the ballot in March, we're going to shoot for November.
How long does the village last? Like, how long, like, let's say it was past March, goes on the following tax year. How long does that stay on the board?
Is it just continuous? The history of the district has been all continuous.
Okay. So there's no.
I think in the past, there was some sort of renewal, but recent, recent history, it's bad.
Our PI levy was a renewal every five years. Our operating for as long as I can remember has always been.
And then, and then you do get in that situation where you have a renewal, but you look at the forecast like, oh my gosh, the renewal's not enough. Then you got to, yeah. So then you see, you see districts now, a district right, right next to us, just. Let's that drop off and try to do new, and then.
Bonds have got to pass. I was interested in that, expired.
So that comes off when?
So the bond, the, the bond issuance would come off at the end of 2025, right, beginning of 2026.
So by the time this one kicks in, we'll be getting 25 something bucks a month, or.
It'll come off your tax.
Off your tax, yeah.
If we passed a bond, I'm sorry, if we passed a levy in 2024, there would be one year of overlap in 2025.
Where the two would be.
And then, and then in 2026.
The other one would be.
The bond issuance would be there.
That's good to communicate too, because it's almost, in some instances, we could be swapping a few bucks, you know?
What do you need?
So that was the, the other one. It was, there was options for a combined levy, operating a PI. There was the PI levy, there was a safety and security levy. I, I didn't know what the, the appetite of the board was going to be today, so I just put all, everything there. So if you would go with one of these, I would quickly go up, scan it, and then add it to the agenda, which we are able to add. And then honestly, when we published the agenda, there was a, a line for a possible levy scenario or resolution.
Was this one sent out?
Yeah, I'm sure that was last night.
So I would like to go four in one. I don't want to entertain the idea of a security levy at this point, because it has to be a separate vote. So if you're going to a vote and asking people, I either want operating or I want security, a lot of times I'm going to pick one or the other. We can put a PI and an operating together as one vote, which makes it a little bit different in itself. But also, at this point, we've committed to the SROs and the security out of our general fund. So I don't know if we necessarily need a separate security levy at this point.
And the other question is you cannot combine an operating and a security. It's different levels of the, or C.
So I say, I think, I think that our best shot here is a, um, operating and a PI. Considering that even if we do consider a bond levy later on, we still might have the other buildings that need to be maintained. And right now, it looks like we're averaging a mil plus every year with mandated repairs and items. So I, my thought would be the four in one.
All right, can we make a decision on four in one, so we can, in the meeting, give Kyle a head start before that, 7 o'clock?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
I know you're against it, Matt.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not necessarily against it. I think I, I just need more time to consider it, look into it. And I also want to see potentially, at least for the community's sake, ways that we're, we have saved money in the ways we're going to plan on continuing to save money. And I think that's important.
I feel like we're the epitome of a district that has continuously had to do more with less. I don't know how much more we can, I mean, I, I do know how, that we can continue to trim, but at the detriment to the kids. My kids, our kids.
We'll be trimming.
So, um, and that's going to continue to happen. We can't really, I mean, and there's, every district in Ohio is, is facing the same crunch of how do you balance, how do you, you know, what do you trim out and, and. Unfortunately, we have to continue to reach out to the community, just like everybody else does. And, and it does come out. That's the format of the state.
Just for clarification, you're, you're not saying yes to putting the levy on the ballot. You're putting, you're saying yes to someone in treasure to go to the county.
Interesting.
And we can still say no.
You can say no.
Yeah, all right. Frankly, this was, the resolution was just sent out, it said yesterday, so.
The four in one, with the money.
All right, so can we adjourn the meeting, send you on your way with four in one, and then we'll vote on it? If we have to have a special meeting to go further, so be it. But let's at least get the process started, just in case. Can I get a motion adjourned?
Motion. We are.
I'll do nothing.
Oh, no, you're still on.
Okay, Mr. Timor.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kearney.
Yes.
Salama.
Yes.
Miss Vodich.
Yes.